Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item is call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation. Next item is mayor's award and proclamations. I'll go to the podium. I had to write it big so I could read it. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm so glad to see everybody. This is an honor for me to present this. For dedicated service and exceptional contributions to Leavenworth City and the surrounding community since the organization's inception in 2009. Post-56 riders participate in numerous activities such as birthday drive-bys and presenting certificates to elderly veterans, visiting hospitalized veterans, bringing wheelchair ramps for veterans, building wheelchair ramps for veterans' homes, and supporting Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and Reefs Across America ceremonies. Each month riders meet at the Leavenworth National Cemetery and conduct a ceremony to honor veterans interred in the preceding 30 days without honors or family. They also assist other organizations such as Patriot Guard riders in conducting funeral escorts and honor ceremonies at funerals of veterans. The first city of Kansas is grateful for the consistently superb support of the VFW Post-56 riders to veterans and their families. Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you, for coming. It's great to see you all here. And you're welcome to stay till the end of the meeting. It's really exciting.
I know.
I want to hear you lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Next proclamation, first proclamation is Leavenworth Farmer's Market. Austin? Enjoy seeing you at the market on the weekends. Whereas the Leavenworth Farmer's Market offers consumers farm-fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthy products such as fruit, vegetables, cheeses, herbs, et cetera, et cetera, many other things. Whereas farmer's markets serve as integral links among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. And whereas the popularity of farmer's markets continues to rise as more and more consumers discover the joys of shopping for unique ingredients sold directly from the farm in their freshest possible state. And whereas farmer's markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, revitalize communities, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers to interact. And whereas the Leavenworth Farmer's Market offers electronic benefits transfer technology for use for supplemental nutrition program and offers opportunities for senior citizens participating in the senior market program. And whereas the United States Department of Agriculture strongly supports and promotes the development, operation, and expansion of farmer's markets and other direct-to-consumer marketing activities for agricultural producers, providing them with marketing opportunities. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, hereby recognize farmer's markets and the contributions farmers make to daily life in America and give notice to our citizens at August 1 through 7, 2021 will be proclaimed Leavenworth Farmer's Market Week. If you're going to speak, speak in here. Do you want to say anything?
Get the picture.
Oh, sorry, picture.
Sure, I can improvise.
Then I can send it to you.
I'd like to thank you all very much.
Thanks, Austin.
Good luck for your market.
You did a great job.
Thank you all.
Right, thank you.
We'll see everyone Saturday.
This is actually, the next one, the proclamation for the Alexandria-Madison Chapter Buffalo Soldiers 155th Anniversary. Actually, I'll be presenting them this tomorrow night at their event, but they asked for a proclamation from the city which I am very happy to present to them. So I'm going to read that here. Whereas on July 28, 1866, the legendary Buffalo Soldiers arose from the 39th Congress Act entitled "An Act to Increase and Fix the Military Peace Establishment of the United States," AKA the Army Reorganization Act of 1866, establishing the first United States African-American military enlistment during peacetime in this nation's history. And whereas under Army Reorganization of 1866, the Act created the 9th and 10th Cavalry Regiments and the 38th, 39th, 40th, and 41st Infantry Regiments, representing 20% of the cavalry and over 10% of the infantry forces in the federal army and, whereas Fort Leavenworth, Kansas is the original home of the 10th Cavalry, beginning in September 1866, and today the home of the National Buffalo Soldier Monument and City Circle of Firsts. And whereas Leavenworth, Kansas was home to many of the Buffalo Soldiers and their families, eventually raising homes, churches, and businesses and growing communities of military and civilian life. The City of Leavenworth, Kansas has long recognized the legendary Buffalo Soldiers contribution and historic importance of the monument. And whereas the Alexander Madison Chapter of Greater Kansas City Buffalo Soldiers 9th and 10th Horse Cavalry Association, originally the Greater Kansas City Leavenworth Area Buffalo Soldiers, is the oldest Buffalo Soldier Chapter in the world, founded July 28, 1966 by veteran Buffalo Soldiers from Kansas City and Leavenworth. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, here proclaim July 28, 2021, as Alexander Madison Chapter Buffalo Soldiers 155th Anniversary Day. Thank you. I forgot to have the veterans speak. But anyway, we do appreciate the riders and what they do for our community. And all of these that we've done, the proclamation tonight. Old Business: Consideration of Previous Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections or additions need to be made to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve minutes from July 13, 2021, regular meeting.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Next item on the agenda, Second Consideration of Ordinances. Ordinance 8169.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this was before the governing body on July 13. There have been no substantive changes or public comments since that meeting. As a reminder, the city will maintain a utility easement as part of this road vacation process.
Thank you. This one, is there any comments or questions on this item? If not, this one calls for a roll call vote. Please begin.
Aye.
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 Five to zero on the roll call. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and this is items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is listed to two to three minutes and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. Sign-up sheet was provided at the commission chambers for anyone who wished to speak. Is there any public comment on anything not on the agenda tonight? Hearing none? We'll move on. Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing for Unsafe or Dangerous Structure, 1006 Kickapoo.
I think Hal Burdette, our Chief Building Inspector, will take the lead on this item.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open public hearing for 1006 Kickapoo Fire Damaged House.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay, Mr. Burdette.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We are all familiar with this process, but this is related to a structure at 1006 Kickapoo that was damaged by fire on April 3 of this year. We all, anytime there's an insurance settlement for more than 75% of the insured value, the city receives a portion of that settlement so that we can either hold on to it until the property owners repair the structure or we use it to demolish the structure. In this case, do I say the house has changed ownership since the fire? But the city still has the proceeds. The new owners have a building permit. They have started work, but they have not gotten to the point where city staff is comfortable asking the commission to release the funds yet. So we're recommending 90 days for them to make progress and then come back and report, and we will keep you updated if it moves quicker than that.
Okay. Is there someone here from an owner?
I know the new owners are here.
Okay. Would you like to come up and speak and see if we have any questions from the? Hi.
Hi, my name's Shaffer Hefkin. This is Shawn Holland. We're the new owners of 1006 Kickapoo. Did you folks have any questions in regards to the progress we've made?
Any questions?
I drove by just 13, 30 minutes before the meeting, drove around back, and I see a lot of the damage is more in the back. You can see the alley. But just so I, you bought it after it burned?
Yes, sir. We took custody of it beginning of June this year.
So the money that we have from the insurance company when we get it back, because I understand it, you'll return to the original owner?
Yes. Because the insurance policy was in their name.
Yeah, and then it's up to them. We're out of it whether you get that money or what.
Yeah, no.
You know how that works.
Yeah, honestly, that has nothing to do with us. That's all previous owners. We're just the ones making the progress on it, and since we've taken it, we're working on the siding. We've taken all the boards off the windows and just trying to make it look a lot nicer for the neighborhood. So we've been working every day. We appreciate your patience.
I could see the work had been done.
Do you think 90 days will be enough for you to get the work done?
We will definitely have the siding on the, we will definitely have the exterior done. Our intent is to have it ready for sheet rock inside, but like I said, we will reevaluate and communicate with you.
Okay. Any other issues on this we can see? Questions? Any other questions?
No.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone else want to speak on this issue?
We're the insured of the house.
Oh, okay, okay.
We can come and kind of see what's going on. It all sounds good to us. We thank them for all the work they're doing. We actually.
You can come over to the mic if you would. Somebody can hear what you're saying.
We had given the property to our grandson. He's the one who sold it to them, or she caught fire and then he couldn't do with it what he wanted. So we were just here, we were the insured. So we're just here to protect our interest, but it all sounds good to us.
You want them to finish it up real quick? You get a paycheck.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else want to speak on this issue? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Okay, the hearing is closed. Now, on the agenda, Consider Resolution B 2286 on this item. Any other comments before we go to a motion? Questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number B 2286, giving the owners 90 days to complete the repairs or another amount of time decided by the commission, but actually 90 days to complete the repairs. That's my motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
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 All right. Let's pass five to zero. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks for coming.
Pray for cooler weather.
Yes, really. Next item on the agenda, Resolution B 2287, Set Public Hearing for Unsafe and Dangerous or Dangerous Structures.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the governing body reviewed the structures included in the policy report at the June 15 meeting. The action tonight is simply to set a public hearing, a public hearing to take place September 14, 2021, here in the city commission chambers to discuss these properties. The only other thing I would add in talking to Julie Hurley today is that not a single property owner on this list has contacted the Planning and Community Development Office to this point. So when we consider these, we will again mention if we've had contact. We urge anybody on this list, property owners, to contact that office as soon as they can and not wait until September 14. This is too commonly the course of action. They've all been notified, and we are only in July, and we still have not heard from anybody. So by September, we would hope to hear from everybody, but the action tonight is simply to set that public hearing in September.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Kramer, so they've all been, received certified letters? Is that correct?
So they've all been notified, but the certified letter will tell them when the public hearing is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they've all been notified.
Notified and told that you're, they haven't decided, told what remedial action needs to be taken, but they know that their house.
Urged to contact the city as soon as possible.
And not one have we heard from.
Not as of earlier today, no.
Hope someone brings the violins on the 14th of September.
Well, there's one I keep driving by, and they're working on it, but evidently they just haven't contacted yet.
They're working on it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion on this issue.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2287, Set a Public Hearing Date of September 14, 2021, for review of 13 dangerous and unsafe structures.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Five to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is First Consideration Ordinance: Illegal Camping.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the police department is before the governing body this evening, asking for you to give consideration to place an ordinance on first consideration that would amend Chapter 30 offenses, Article 1, by adding Section 30-8 illegal camping and repealing Section 32-37 camping. We were here on July 6 and presented a ordinance option for discussion regarding the issues we've had relative to homeless folks occupying city parks and public ride away. This was an ordinance that we proposed, that we modeled after the city of Lawrence, Kansas, and Topeka. After those discussions we had on July 6, you provided direction for us to move forward for this evening, and so we're here. Want to answer some questions that we talked about at the July 6, do some follow-up on that, starting with Mayor Bowder. Had some question or discussion about the fine of up to $500 for a violation. The city commission, the governing body, can establish whatever fine schedule you would like for a violation. The up to $500, it would be entirely the judge's discretion. Generally, things to consider would be how many offenses, so a first offense, it's not likely at all that it would be $500. It would be something less than that, way less than that, I would consider. That would be our experiences. Again, if you want to reduce that or change that, you can.
Oh, I'm okay with it. I just don't know how they can afford to pay for it.
Right. Our intent is not the fine. The intent is the framework for us to take action when we feel it's necessary. So I wanted to address that, that particular issue. Again, that's entirely up to you, but we left it as up to $500 to give the judge as much discretion as possible. If we have chronic cases of three or four times, you know, it might be necessary then to try and do that, but that's the answer to that. Mr. Prisinger had indicated an effort to try and maybe simplify the ordinance a little bit, just and myself and Catalina Thompson talked a lot about that. We were comfortable leaving the way it is for a couple of reasons. One, it's very important to be very specific about certain things to make sure that the ordinance is not too vague. And two, the ordinance has been in existence in other communities in Kansas for, since at least 2012 in Lawrence. And so anytime you have the opportunity to sort of model, that's used that, it's been subjected some legal challenges, at least to the district court level, and survived that, and so it was our recommendation to leave it as is and it would withstand the legal doctrine.
Thanks for checking.
And then Commissioner Griswold, you had asked whether or not the law enforcement, we had had an opportunity to visit some of our colleagues in Lawrence and Topeka to determine the effectiveness of it. They use it very much like we would intend to use it here in our community, which is on these sort of problems that arise that are pretty serious, that's exactly how they use it. And I think the question, was it effective? Yes, it's effective in dealing with those sort of critical, serious problems that arise. It gives them a good tool. They use it. Topeka's not quite as aggressive as Lawrence is, but they both use it, and both of our, you know, colleagues that we talked to described it as effective. And so we did have those questions. I think that was the sort of left with that, did follow up with that, and so, you know, very briefly, there will be a budget impact to the city. The times that we've had to take action on these critical issues, the city has had to expend resources from the Parks Department, the Rep Use Department, and then the last one was pretty significant. We had to hire, the city had to hire a contractor, and it's pretty expensive to do that. But, you know, so there is some budget impact of passing this ordinance and us having to be a little bit more active in enforcing it, okay? Just wanted to make sure that we had that. So unless there are any other questions or comments, we're ready to proceed, we're ready to proceed with our recommendation. Again, very briefly, we would be asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration that would amend Chapter 30 offenses, Article 1, by adding 30-8 illegal camping and to repeal Section 32-37 camping. And I'll answer whatever questions you might have.
So just say if we did approve this ordinance, we're not setting the fine amount? That's up to the judge?
Well, you would be establishing the maximum fine of $500. It couldn't exceed that for a particular individual charge. And I think that's pretty standard throughout all of the ordinances in the city, that that's the maximum amount.
Chief, obviously, there's been some talk about this throughout the community. Has the illegal camping subsided somewhat, knowing that this may be on our agenda?
So we've been obviously monitoring very closely, particularly the park up north, and I've had some of my staff, I've tasked them with driving by at certain periods of the time every day to kind of gauge, and we are back to what I would describe as normal behavior, which was what we were experiencing there. Typically about two or three people that are at the park every day, sitting at the picnic table, which is perfectly legal, and they're behaving themselves quite nicely, and there aren't issues. We have not had the flare-up that we had, which was sort of the precipice of this back a month or so, oh, two ago, where there was the sort of group of six or eight people sort of occupying the shelter. It was very effective at work, and we haven't had that experience, but we'll continue to sort of monitor things. We really don't have time to stop every day and look under the bridges and that sort of thing, but we do, you know, when the folk, when the community calls us or we get complaints, we'll go check and look. The park's obviously easier to drive by and take a look at, but.
If an officer drives by at 2:00 in the morning, are there people camping there?
We have not seen that yet consistently. That is typically dealt with by park hours being closed. They're closed at 10:30 to 6:00 in the morning, so we can deal with that. If, again, they're behaving themselves and there's not an issue, we prob, and we have other things going on, we will typically let that slide, but again, the biggest issue was the group of probably six or seven people that really sort of took over the park and occupied it. So we still continue occasionally have the issue with the one person that's occupying the bathroom. We went up and addressed that the other day, you know, that's, but that's complaint-based and, you know, we deal with those as we get complaints, and so we're hoping to continue to do that. But this gives us the opportunity to take action and be a little bit steadier in what we're doing.
Havens Park, that's another one, too.
Guys and girls typically drive through once a shift. I mean, it's pretty far up there. They typically drive through once a shift. I went up there.
We've been walking up there. We've seen cars there, look like people are living there in the cars.
Okay, I can, we'll do that. I was up Friday afternoon, I drove through there Friday afternoon, took a look, it was quiet, I didn't see anybody.
Good, that's good to know.
And so just say if a citizen called and made a complaint, what's the process? What do you?
Depends on what the complaint is and then what we find when we get there. So for example, if it would be this, where we experienced the group of folks up there, how we handled that before, I'll give you the example. We went up there two days beforehand, and we started communicating with the folks that were up there, and we were explaining, hey, you can't behave this way, you can't do these sorts of things, and so in a day or two, we're going to come up here and take some enforcement action, so if there's an opportunity for you to go and, you know, make different arrangements, go ahead and do that. We'll typically sort of slow walk to the, and then we went up and a couple days later and took some enforcement action, issued a few tickets, made a few arrests. It settled down for a couple days. We went back, there was a couple folks up there, too. We made another arrest, and then that quelled the event. So that's traditionally how we handle these kinds of things. Somebody calls and complains, it depends on how serious it is as to where we fall in terms of our enforcement action. We just don't like to have the cops just show up en masse, unannounced, and start doing that. That's problematic. So we try and give them and ourselves the opportunity to get to the resolution, which is, you know, hey, we want the park to be back open, so.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? If not, this just calls for consensus to move forward. Is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yep. Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, First Consideration Ordinance Amending Chapter 6 Alcoholic Beverage and Cereal Malt Beverage.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'll start with this item. We also have our city clerk, Carla Williamson, and our city attorney, David Waters, to answer questions on this. When the state legislature makes changes to the alcohol laws in the state of Kansas, the city typically adds those or amends those to our city code. And this is, this is what's before you now. A lot of the items that came through the legislature that are related to this started through the COVID issues last year, stuff like being able to purchase a drink, curbside, and some of the different concessions made to some alcohol vendors or restaurants back then. So the legislature made the decision to make a lot of those changes permanent. And so as the city does when the state changes those laws, they do leave it, you know, to the city to enact those. So I'm not going to go through every single section of this. Most of them, there's a lot of just small changes based on changes the legislature made. I do want to indicate that one of the changes that's, that is in there is changing the alcohol sales on Sunday from noon to 9:00 AM. And speaking to city attorney Waters, who has a lot of contact with cities, this is universally across the board been put into place. There hasn't been a lot of issues. This came from the state legislature. And I know Commissioner Mary Puttim Leonhard reached out to a couple businesses, and she may, may comment about that. It's generally looked upon favorably by a lot of the businesses to be on a level playing field. So if you have specific questions about some of the sections, again, our city attorney can handle those, and, but that would be what the majority of this action would be is to adopt those changes to the alcohol regulations passed by the state legislature.
No, the only thing I would add is that there's kind of a wrinkle with this because of the way the Sunday sales legislation is written. This actually does require a delayed effectiveness that provides essentially for a 60-day protest period on this. That was part of the compromise when the original Sunday sales were going to be authorized, that if a city adopted it, that would allow the residents by a certain petition amount to block that from happening. So since this is another adjustment as to Sunday sales going from 12:00 to noon, this would still be subject to a 60-day period before it could take effect, at least those two sections as to Sunday sales.
Okay, I have a question then. So let's say we have a consensus tonight, in two weeks we vote on it, so then there's a 60-day period that has to, you wait until?
Yes.
After that?
And then they can do the Sundays at 9:00 AM?
Exactly right. You have to wait until, until that passes unless, and if, but if there is a protest of some kind, then.
Right.
Yeah, then it couldn't pass. You'd have to have an election on it.
So basically, we're looking at playoff season because this thing is built around the Chiefs playing at noon. Or at least halfway through the season.
But that is, that's a statutory requirement.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Do we know what, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Do we know what the rationale of the legislature was as far as, I mean, I hear it's tied to maybe what's happening in COVID.
So that language on the 60 days?
No, that's 60 days. The 12, to 12:00 noon to 9:00 AM, was it just?
No, I mean, I think it was just, there's been lobbying efforts for a number of years, you know, everything from expansion of what you can sell in grocery stores and that, and this is another kind of move, move on that part. this is another kind of move, move on that part. I think what, two or three years ago, we had the, the brunch rule, we called that, that allowed liquor consumption on premises to go earlier in the mornings as well, and that was a, a change that was made for, for brunch hour, as they called it, and this is just kind of another in that line.
In that trend.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
During Monday through Saturday, when can you start buying liquor? Is it?
Nine AM to?
So it starts at nine AM, so you're just going to make it to seven, everybody at nine AM, seven days a week.
Right, the only hour difference is on Sunday, which starts at noon.
Till eight.
And it all depends on whether you're talking about a restaurant or you're talking about package sales and, and all of that as well.
Right.
Okay, well, I do, actually, I talked to several different liquor store owners and managers, and a lot of them were for it, they just said convenience for the customers, they wanted it, they have a lot of people they feel going to Missouri on Sundays, so they want to try to keep them here in the city and the state. They talked a lot about the Chiefs, where the people were angry because they couldn't get their alcohol before the Chiefs game started, so I said, well. And then you had others that said, hey, you know what, I'm still going to open at noon, I don't care, you know, you can pass it at nine, some said, hey, pass it at nine, I might not open until ten. Then you had one that, yeah, was opposed, so, yeah, you had a variety, but I think.
What was the reason?
Opposed was the staffing, and then if.
They don't have to open, though.
Right, but he said it would take away from his sales if the others were open at nine.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, um, so you had, you had a nice variety, but people appreciated me asking what they saw, since this pertained to them, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other issues, comments with this?
That summarizes it.
What are you doing down in the metropol, uh, metropolis of Westwood, how do they handle?
We, we passed an ordinance just like this.
Are you in the sixty-day period right now?
We are in the sixty-day period right now.
Okay.
Because I know Basar did already and Bonner.
Prairie Village.
Prairie Village has.
Kansas City, Kansas.
I also represent Udora and they have as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Now you can have your beer after church.
Before.
During church.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the claims for July tenth, twenty twenty-one through July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, six dollars and ninety-six cents, net amount for payroll, number fourteen, effective July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-six cents, includes police and fire pension, in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting, Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll go around the table here and I have something, but I'll have Mr. Kramer first.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to mention is hopefully residents have seen the roadwork going on around town. Our public information officer put a very good video about the new pressure pave process on, on Facebook this afternoon, so they'll be in the community the next two days. That's a pilot program, we're doing limited areas around the city, but we're really excited about this new process, and there's a really good about minute and a half video on our Facebook page about the pressure pave and what it looks like as they're putting it down in two hours later, and so, working on that, and then unless something's changed, I think next week, Mill and Overlay?
August ninth.
August ninth will be the, the, by far the majority, about eighty, ninety percent of the dollars of our road program on August ninth will start, and that is our Mill and Overlay project, so a lot of work going on around the city.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Road, road program, okay, what we did a couple of weeks ago was, yeah, Mr. Faust may want to come up and answer, was, was granite sealed, correct?
Chicken seal.
On a lot of, or a significant number of streets in the, in the northern part of Leavenworth?
Yeah, that's.
I've seen some, I mean, I've gotten not a lot of complaints, but I've gotten some complaints, particularly when it's first put down, but you had mentioned there's a sweeping program that's going on, right, to get that loose material up?
And that's correct, typically in the past, we've done three cycles of sweeping, actually in twenty twenty-one, we've added a fourth.
Okay.
And so this one pretty quickly after we apply it, and then I think the last one's about sixty days after, so it has a chance for all the loose gravel to pop up.
So has, had there been some sweepings that have been done already?
Yes, that's correct.
And then will there, will there be one more, is that what?
I would say probably at least two more.
Okay. And, and how does that, does the sweeping go up into the, into the piece of equipment or does it go out to the side?
It, it actually goes up into the equipment and then they haul it off to.
Okay, yeah, because I, I did, I've been driving on those streets the last couple of days, it seems pretty good to me, I mean, I can tell that they've been swept and they do seem better than when they were, the, the material was first put down. The other question I have is, and I don't know how many streets had striping, maybe not most of them, but if the street had striping, will we put striping on the streets or did none of them have striping?
Typically on the granite sill, most of those did not have striping.
Okay.
With our pavement management plan, we actually do a lot of striping.
Right.
We're associated with that.
So do you think we'll be doing some striping on roads that didn't have striping or, or?
Not, not on the one, the granite sills, if they did not have striping, we would not put striping back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm going to say something here about vaccines tonight, okay? I'll go ahead and go around the table first. Commissioner?
Nothing, I'd just like to give a little shout-out to Assistant City Manager Taylor Tetter, this I know will be his last meeting, and I'm speaking for myself, I know that I've appreciated working with him for what, six years, how long have you been here? Six?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, six years. Appreciate all that he's done, his professionalism, and wish he and his wife the best in Boulder City, Nevada, and we think it's hot here and, it's much hotter there, but congratulations, wish you all the best, and we'll miss you here, but you're making a good move.
Thank you. Commissioner Prisinger will certainly miss, will certainly miss Mr. Tetter. Yes, sir?
I know, you're going to talk about vaccines, do you want me to like take thirty seconds on stuff?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, all right, so I took a look yesterday, the stats came out from the county health department, comes out on a Monday, weekly basis, and the cases went from back on the nineteenth of July to the, yesterday, increased from a hundred and seven to a hundred and sixty-two cases, so that's a fifty-five more cases than the week before, and that's a fifty-one percent increase, so that's not a good, a good trend. And then the other thing, the other one I'd normally cover is the positivity rate on testing for COVID nineteen, and, let me think here, it went up to eleven point two-one percent and yesterday, a week prior, it had been at eight, eight point five, eight point five-four percent, so since la, in the last five weeks, that's a seven hundred and twenty-four percent increase in the positivity rate for, and that's, you know, that's the Delta variant and the transmissibility of that particular variant, so I just share that as just information that's not going in the right direction as far as COVID nineteen, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything?
Yes, ma'am, this upcoming Saturday, July thirty-first, Unity in the Community will be partnering with our local law enforcement, we'll be having a free family fun Unity Day event, there's going to be bounce houses, face painting, barbecue chicken, and this event is going to feature the youth versus the police department and a basketball game. This event is fun, it's exciting, we just finalized our recruitment, we got a six-foot-eight small forward, please come out, it is at Bob Doughty Park, starting at ten AM.
Cool. Pray for good weather.
Pray for cool weather.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, just real quick, August third is, you know, you can vote now, but August third's the, for the primaries, and I will be doing my civic duty, I will be out at the city of Lansing, getting people hopefully to vote, I think it's from seven to seven, so I'll be out there all day, they're having their school board race, the primary, so I'll be out at the city of Lansing.
And we'll be having one here, too.